All right, I'd like to call the Village Board to order at 7:30. Could you call the roll, please?
Trustee Ursink.
Here.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Here.
Trustee Stokebrand.
Here.
President McCaig.
Here.
Trustees Arndorfer and Warren and Backhorst are excused.
Thank you. And has the meeting been publicly noticed?
It's been noticed and posted in accordance with law.
All right, well, welcome, everyone. Thank you in advance for your time, talent, and patience. And it's nice to be in the same room with most people and then our viewers from home. So this is really exciting. It's been a long time. So, oh, I thought, okay, item four, we have a special order of business tonight. We have our library director, Rachel Collins, here to share an EDI update from the library perspective. And I want to say thank you for being flexible. We had a change in agendas at the last minute and you were able to be here. So, thank you.
Glad to be here today. But to be here and in front of all of you, so here to give. In late 20. You know this, the library board adopted a library equity commitment. Thank you. So we had a lot. We really wanted to ensure that. Statement. All for. May. Where it was wanting. So. In that vein, the wanted to. Effective data. Those. 2021 first full year with. That's some whole. Full objective. With them all. Just going to highlight a handful. Transition. There are some. Need to. So first off, we wanted to integrate the collection. And then effective. Into our. To just sure that we don't. Fulfilling this. All. Do. But we also created an. Data. Many of the resources used to apply by the. But also stating these.
To something. Rachel, could we pause for one moment, please? Does anyone have their audio on? On their computer? Give your audio on. At all? I apologize.
I was ready. I was like, I'm going to be the first one.
We should have had a test speaker.
As being so my pleasure.
Wonder if we need to get the microphone closer to her?
I think it's something I did because I moved mine. That was the only. Anyway.
Way to take it on. Okay, here we go. Um, we did create an equity weapon. That lists those objectives and goals. We really wanted to have that. That's fair.
Rachel, could I ask you to not stand at the podium, but just go closer to the mic?
Sure.
Um, I'm just getting word that you're feeding in and out. So let's try it that way.
How about that? We'll see if that works a little bit better. So. We also offered quite a few learning opportunities. Those, most of those were in partnership with other organizations. In particular, the Shorewood Senior Resource Center, the Friends of the Shorewood Public Library, the CDA. So some great learning opportunities. And we also participated in the Milwaukee County Earn and Learn Program. Teen intern meant we had to allocate staff resources for a site coordinator, Lisa Quintero. Stepped up to bat for that. So a lot of successful accomplishments in a difficult year in 2021.
Thank you for being so kind to me and allowing. But could you speak straight into the mic? Apparently when you tilt your head.
That's hard because I want to provide eye contact to people, so.
We'll have to maybe look at a different microphone setup.
Okay.
For that one.
Maybe we could use the necklace one. The kind of, do you have a necklace?
Lapel where you just.
The little or a chin mic or something?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, we'll work on that.
Live and learn.
Brainstorm.
Okay.
Thank you.
So moving on to 2022. The objectives that we have, these are already on our website. I invite you to go there and take a closer look. We have included an optional weighted equity diversity and inclusion component to our library renovation, RFP, that will be going out for construction management firms. That has not been issued yet, but we wanted to, I mean, this is some of the library work that we're doing in a way that we can incorporate that commitment into the work we do with other vendors. We did submit a proposal to the Friends of the Shorewood Public Library to support a bathroom equity project that we're super excited about. They approved that proposal two weeks ago. And so you'll be seeing free period products in both our women's restroom and our gender neutral bathroom at the library. We also participated in the National IMJS Community Read Day in February. That was a partnership with the Shorewood School District. And we had four different community members read books. This is a reading day that affirms transgender and non-binary youth through reading books. Got great social media traction, a lot of positives. We're going to continue the Milwaukee County Earn and Learn Program, and Lisa feels ready to take on two teens. It's a great program. And we're really excited to participate in the environmental scan that the village is going to lead. We feel like we have quite a bit to contribute. So those are highlights of last year and looking ahead. I'd be happy to answer any questions related to our equity commitment.
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to say thank you for presenting this. And I know that it's National Library Week this week. So, you know, we're really fortunate to have such an amazing library here in Shorewood. You know, libraries do so much for people, whether they're looking for a job, they need a safe space, they need defined resources, they're looking for public health information. And it's just really wonderful, and we're very fortunate to have such an amazing library here in Shorewood. So thank you.
You're welcome.
I would echo that. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Appreciate all your efforts. Interesting.
Yeah, it's a great team. Tomorrow is actually National Library Workers' Day. So. Forward to thanking my whole team.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks so much.
Thank you. And I just want to say, I want to take a moment to say specifically that I don't think that we could have really started talking about equity in the village at the government level without those two years of, you know, educating residents and creating space in our community that, you know, unlearning racism is a priority and necessary and that drawing that connection. And everybody that asks about, you know, how do I get something started in my community? I say it was our library that started it off and provided that. So and then it feeds into the school and it feeds into administration and all that. So just thank you, and it doesn't go unnoticed.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right, so moving on to item five, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion by trustee Ursink, seconded by trustee Baldoff. Any discussion? Trustee Stokebrand.
I'd like to please pull item five B as in boy.
All right, item five B as in boy. Anyone else? Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of five B friendly amendment?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the consent agenda is adopted as amended, four zero. It's nice not to have to take a roll call every time. All right, moving on to item six, items removed from the consent agenda. Item five B, which is the Consider Village Board Meeting Minutes, March 21st, 2022. Trustee Stokebrand.
I just had two things. First of all, I thought pretty sure trustee Arndorfer was. And so that's noted. And then item six, the items removed from the agenda. One instead of none, because then the next paragraph goes in. So on item six, instead of none.
Oh, that's right, that was spring break week. It was. Thank you for catching that. All right, anything else? All right, is there a motion to approve the March 21st minutes as amended?
So moved. Second.
All right, motion by trustee Stokebrand, seconded by trustee Baldoff. All those, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, minutes are adopted as amended. Item seven, public hearings. We have one that will be rescheduled. Item eight, citizens to be heard. This item is for matters not on the agenda or occurring later in the agenda. Are there any members of the public that would like to be heard this evening? We will look up at the screen and we will also look in the audience tonight. All right, I am not seeing any hands. If you'd like to be heard, please raise your hand or unmute yourself and state your name and turn your camera on. Okay, are you seeing anyone? All right. Thank you. Item nine, new business, nine A, consider vendor for EDI environmental scan and strategic plan. So I will hand this over to manager Ewald. Who will hand it over to trustee Moore Baldoff.
All right. Well, I, you know, think it's timely that we're talking about this now and we got a really wonderful update from the library, and this is something I'm excited about. You know, that I feel like was one of the first big projects that I got to work on, on the board, and one that I'm incredibly excited about and grateful that we're going to be able to move forward with. You know, I hope an amazing partner. So I reviewed proposals with manager Ewald and Mackenzie Edmonds, representing the Human Relations Commission. We had a pretty significant number of submissions to our RFP 13, which I believe I heard was the highest or one of the highest responses that we've ever gotten, which I think speaks to, you know, the importance of the work and, you know, how people think that they can make a difference in Shorewood. So I think that was a really wonderful thing that we had so many firms that were interested. And, you know, we talked to some really wonderful folks who I think had had great ideas. Interviewed three different companies, Green Bicycle Company, Cairo Communications, and Wisconsin Institute for Public Policy and Service. And, you know, these were all great, great companies with with great ideas, but one really, really stood out to us as being just, you know, just the right fit for our community. And that was Cairo Communications, who we are recommending to perform both the environmental scan and the strategic plan. You know, they really, I think, met what we were asking for and beyond. Were able to bring to us things that we hadn't necessarily been thinking and really understand the community. And I think will be incredible and valuable partners to do work that's going to have a lasting impact. And, you know, there was a high, a high priority for us as we were reviewing proposals to have this work be done in person as much as possible. So that was definitely one of the, one of the value adds, certainly not the only one, but one of the value adds with Cairo Communications that they are available to be doing as much work in person as is possible. You know, so they, you know, I don't want to, you know, just read the memo, but we'll talk a little bit about, you know, kind of what they'll be doing through the scan, which is, you know, understanding where we are now, where we're going, where we want to be, how do we get there? And then how did we get there so we can, you know, be a model for other communities? And so that we understand when we are looking to do more work. We don't want this to just be, we tried this and this is what we did, and now we're going to move on. We know that this is going to be work that's ongoing and we're committed to doing that work on an ongoing basis. So it's really important that we have a firm that's going to work with us to understand the how and the why so we can, we can continue the work. So. You know, like I said, they're going to come in and work in person as much as possible, conduct some in-person interviews, really get a chance to meet with folks working throughout the village and understand what's going on. And then we'll facilitate the creation of a strategic plan by, you know, using the data and the perspectives that they've obtained through that environmental scan, through getting to talk to folks, and then making this be a plan that that we can use so that this isn't just the kind of plan that says, well, here's what you could do, and then it gets put on a shelf and it doesn't get done. We want this to be something that actually happens. That's why we're doing it. So we think that's going to be a really, you know, important part of of this plan and this work is that it's going to have meaningful and actionable steps that we can take as a community and understand, you know, kind of what those next steps will be and how do you keep that commitment going in the future? So that's, that's what I have to talk about. And I think I would just turn it back over to President McCaig.
All right, great. So a couple of things, I just wanted to clarify the the scan is really looking at the village organization, right? And that will impact the community, but it won't directly involve residents, you know, in terms of like input and things like that at this point. So it really is that step of where are we as an organization in terms of our commitment to equity, diversity and inclusion, and why are we here? And then where would we go as an organization? And that will certainly impact residents, but wanted to start here. The other thing that I wanted to acknowledge, and Dr. Blanks is here this evening, and if you would like to say anything, you're welcome to. And I know you would probably take questions. You're not obligated to, but if you'd like to speak.
Very brief, I just wanted to say how thrilled my team is to be working with the village. One of the things that makes this exciting for us is, one, we love this type of research. We're committed to it. We're confident, but we also are excited about our partnership. Shorewood is doing great things. We want to help move that progress.
Thank you. And I'll also just say disclosure wise, Dr. Blanks and I know each other. And we met in a discussion, abolition discussion group through Shorewood Moving Forward. And then happened to through a project, an evaluation that you did for Milwaukee County, I was a stakeholder interview and part of that. And then we made the connection about, you know, both living in Shorewood, et cetera, et cetera. And then when Rebecca and I were talking about the strategic plan and finishing up the EDI committee recommendations from Mr. Coleman, and, you know, we kept kind of coming back to like, how do you write an RFP for a strategic plan? You know, we know these things can be very superficial and we know these things need not be, right? We need this to be, to have teeth in it and all that. And I thought of Dr. Blanks, and I said, you know, there's a Shorewood resident who, I don't know all her experience, but she seems like she'd be a good thought partner. And so how about if we just invite her in and see if she's interested in being a resident thought partner? Just because I'm a natural networker. So I just wanted to say that that was the only contact that I've had. I wasn't involved in the review process or the RFP process. But I did want you all to know that, that I had that conversation and everything. And that thought partner conversation was really, really helpful because out of that came, hey, there's this step that you can take. It's called a scan. And it really sets you up. And I was like, that's what we need. You know, it was really that kind of thing. So didn't know that this would be the, you know, the outcome here this evening, but wanted to let you know. So questions from trustees? Yes.
So being a Shorewood resident, pre-scan, what would be your impression of our community right now? Before, before doing this work and just being a resident here?
My impression is that Shorewood has the reputation for excellence for a quality lifestyle, is looking to be more racially equitable. But the whole community is not on board. And if you talk to people of color who live in Shorewood or around Shorewood, they would say while they have hope, they have some skepticism. And I think oftentimes when communities are trying to work toward racial equity, they're not sure how to take the next step. So you have so many positive things working for you, but you also have a business and quite sure about how you deal with equity.
Thank you.
Any other questions or a motion? Trustee Stokebrand.
You. So I was, I noticed you talk about this core group. Two trustees, two HH, that mean?
HRC.
HRC, okay. And then the department heads, so the core group that you'd get, it sounds like you would do most. Data gathered from, be that? Or I'm.
What we would do is come in and have a conversation with the village. Whoever else she directed us. And the core groups is really dependent on what you want, not what we want. Because you know your community, this community better than, you know, the organization better than us. And so we're going to listen. We're going to use our expertise and advise you, but we're not trying to tell you who the core group.
Okay, because it says it's department. That's.
If I could clarify, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but within the scope of the documentation of work that we have completed, we had an internal EDI subcommittee, which I believe trustee Stokebrand and also trustee Ursink were present on. And so when I looked at that language, it was representative of that group who had been initially engaged and in conversation with the work that we had already accomplished with Sam Coleman. So from my perspective and being the reader of the proposal, it made sense to me that they would be starting with those individuals because they have been the first EDI subcommittee that the village has had. And then provide so they could get some baseline of information and fact gathering about how that experience went for us and how it concluded.
Okay, so that's, there's some fluidity. I mean, I'm not sure if trustee Ursink is ready to commit tonight or not. But I guess I would, you know, we have two new trustees coming on, obviously. So I was just curious about where we stood with with this group. I think originally we also did have some committee member volunteers who were in too. It's about two years.
Yes.
And so it kind of makes, besides the HO, is it just HRC?
Correct.
Oh. I just, I have a question just generally. Why are we keeping it that? There are a lot of the, is there a reason that we wouldn't include some? In this, because I think the original plan with Sam Coleman was it would be some training work and then there would be a trickle down. Anyway, it's been two years, a long time. And that there'd be some outreach into the community based upon who did that first group. And so I guess I'm just wondering, do we want to find a way? Or would it be possible to have more members of the community besides this focus on? There a reason why we would do it this way versus?
I could tell you that Cairo is committed to doing it the way Shorewood wants it done. But to react specifically to some of the points you brought up, we want to interview that EDI committee because they've done the work. And we want to hear from them where they think they are and how they got there and look at that history. So that's critical. We want to talk to department heads because if you don't have the buy-in of the department heads, oftentimes you don't move forward with anything you want to do. So they're critical. We believe though that the board is important, but also I connect with what you're talking about with citizens. Because what you want to do at some point is hear. Government is doing one thing. Municipality is working hard, but what's the perception of the community? And not just one or two people, but a diverse cross-section of the community. Community, because at the end of the day, you need all of the groups to come together. So we have submitted our proposal, our quote. Our quote is firm, but that means we're going to do what you want us to do. And if that means you want us to expand the core group or the committees, if you want us to go into to the community, we would love the opportunity to do that. Because at the end of the day, as the trustee mentioned, we don't want this on the shelf either. We want this a living, breathing, doable plan that you implement. And then over the course of years, you come back and you can see the progress. So we're committed to doing it.
Thank you.
Trustees. This is just a volume thing.
Yes.
Trustees Stokebrand, when you speak into your mic, I just got feedback. I know, we're all learning tonight. Try to focus on just going into the mic, because when your head was turning, you were fading in and out. So just.
Thank you. I'll try.
It's tough.
If I may just clarify, so the, if you recall, Mr. Coleman's kind of end report and recommendations, this scope of work, the EDI scan, which we kind of added in, and the strategic process, strategic plan process, was one of his recommendations. So that's why, you know, that's one way of thinking about why this scope is the way that it is. And just remember that that report had other recommendations in as well.
Okay, and then I did just wonder, I realize that this was probably submitted thinking this would start in March, but obviously it's April. And so the timeline, obviously, we're starting a month later. So do you see this then going into January? It looked like you had this wrapped up by the end of the year. And but starting in March, and today's April 4th, so would you try to get it done yet by December 2022? Or do you see this then just because of the timeframe and the delay? Thinking with the original month.
We can stick with the original timeline in part because while we know that you're bringing on new key staff, these chief, another administrator, they need time to become acclimated. But at the front end, we're talking about looking at history. We're talking about some things that we can do where we don't need to engage with staff. So we don't see a problem at all in getting, starting to move this forward after we know that it's been approved so that we we stay with the time.
Thank you. And then I just have one question for trustee Baldoff. I noticed there's no, no cost and no date in the motion. And I would be prepared to make a motion, but my preference would be to have the $50,000 and not to exceed for 2022 and a not to exceed $20,000 for 2023, if that's okay? I noticed there were some options in there for additional things, but at which point we could just come before the board again, correct?
Exactly. Yeah, I'm comfortable with a motion that is inclusive of the fiscal impact.
Okay.
Would you like to make a motion?
I would. I move to select Cairo Communications to conduct EDI environmental scan for an amount not to exceed $50,000 in 2022 and a strategic plan not to exceed $20,000 in 2023.
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Stokebrand, seconded by trustee Ursink. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's, actually, we don't need to do a roll call vote, do we? Because we're all in person now. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Really look forward to this, Dr. Blanks. All right, moving on to nine B, Consider 2022 Wisconsin DNR Safe Drinking Water Loan Program, Private Lead Service Line Replacement Program Approach. This will be Director Bushlick, who's on screen.
Good evening. I'm, I'm thrilled to be your guinea pig this evening. So I've been, I apologize, I've been the one that's been texting Rebecca saying, you know, offering the various comments about audio. you know, offering the various comments about audio. So, um, you know, give it right back, please. If there's anything that I can do to make this clearer or better.
You sound great.
So we're here tonight to talk about the program structure for the grant that the village received. Um, and it's, it's a pretty long program. It's the, the DNR Safe Drinking Water Loan Program, um, Private Lead Service Replacement Program. And you will recall, staff came to you, um, late last year and asked for authorization to submit a, a funding application to that program. Um, the good news is the village was awarded, um, this, the funding that it asked for. So the total grant is $405,000. Four thousand, four hundred, excuse me, $405,000. Um, four hundred of that thousand of that is allocated toward the replacement of the private side of up to 50 lead services in the villages of Shorewood. The $5,000, uh, can be used by the village in the development and approval, um, implementation of a mandatory, uh, lead service replacement ordinance. That's something we'll be talking about, um, over the next several weeks to months coming up as we talk about some of our, um, lead service line replacement program objectives, goals and, um, and plans, but, you know, just sort of tuck that away, we'll, we'll come back to that. Um, but tonight what staff would like to do, um, is have the board, um, indicate a preference for a program approach. Um, the, the program as it's written allows for two, um, two methods of implementation. Um, one is the development of a, um, pre-qualified contractor list. So essentially the village is, is issuing a request for qualifications. Interested contractors would supply the required information. Um, the village would, uh, review and vet those applications. And then if they met qualifications, um, label those contractors as pre-qualified. Um, that list could then be used by homeowners who are participating in the program um, to select a contractor for the replacement of their private side lead service. At that point, there, there's kind of two roads that, that are open. Um, one is that the homeowner pays the contractor and then the village uses the grant funding to reimburse the homeowner. Um, interestingly, the program also does allow for, um, once the village can certify that the work was done according to standards, it does allow the village to use the grant funding to directly, um, compensate the contractor for the work that was done according to the contract. Um, I think that probably saves some steps. And I think that's probably the preferable option for most of the homeowners who would participate. The other program approach would be for the village to actually, um, bid the work as a public construction project, very similar to our alley project, our parking lot projects. You know, any type of work that we generally award a construction contract for. Um, there, there are some differing requirements when you use that approach. There are some, some federal wage requirements that come into play. But I think for staff, the biggest drawback, quite honestly, um, for that approach for this program year is that we're already pretty far into the construction bidding season. Um, realistically, we wouldn't be able to get this project out on the street or at least a contract awarded probably until the end of May, possibly early June. Um, and that, you know, that, that creates some other challenges. So as you'll note in the memo, um, the program approach that staff is recommending is the development of a pre-qualified contractor list. Um, and then we would further recommend that option where, um, staff would certify that the work was done according to the program requirements and directly reimburse the contractor. Or directly compensate the contractor rather than having the homeowner pay the contractor and the village, um, reimburse the homeowner. Um, I have had some fairly extensive discussions with our finance director. He is on board with that approach, um, for this program year. If we were to continue work under this program and request additional funding for future years, um, we would likely line that up with our combined sewer improvements in 23 and 24. So at that point, I think we'd be recommending a very different approach to the program. Definitely through a municipally bid contract. So, um, you know, th- this year is different. Um, going forward, we probably would be looking at quite a different approach. As I said, for this year, we'd be looking at, um, recommending the development of a list of pre-qualified contractors and then the village directly compensating those contractors for the work that was done. Just a, a couple of things to note. I think in, in the memo, you know, I, I did note that we, this could fund up to 50. These are based on estimates that we prepared last year. I think we all know how, um, how, how successfully we can cost estimate things these days and have any confidence that that's going to stick for very long, right? So, um, it may be 50, it may be somewhat less than 50. But, you know, as I noted in the memo, we have just over 3,000, um, private lead services in the village currently. Um, so that really works out to certainly less than 2% of all, of all of the service lines that do need some attention. So, uh, given that, staff doesn't believe, um, that sort of a, um, just a, a very broad, um, open to anyone, first come, first served type of program is really, um, is really the way to go. That creates some pretty significant challenges with selection, communication, all of that. So what we're really recommending, um, is the identification of right now two separate groups. Uh, the first would be licensed daycares within the villages of Shorewood. You know, as we mentioned previously, all of the schools have non-led service line materials. We've documented that. Um, but there are two in-home daycares that are registered with the state of Wisconsin as registered childcare providers and facilities, um, that according to our records do currently have lead service lines. So we would recommend, um, you know, targeting those two properties first. Um, and then our secondary approach would be to, um, utilize the funds for conditions that we identify over the course of the, uh, remaining implementation of our water meter replacement program. You know, as mentioned last year, as you know, you know, we had some, some pretty well documented difficulties with the condition of some of the private infrastructure in the village. Multiple times ran across, um, service lines where either, um, the valves were inoperable, the privately owned valves on the private service line were inoper- inoperable, or the, the curb valve shut-off boxes, which are technically part of the village's portion of the service line, were inoperable. Um, in either of those cases, the real remedy is to replace, um, the service. Um, as you know, several years ago, the board did, um, approve a private or a lead service replacement program, um, which does require the village to replace the municipal side of a service anytime a homeowner replaces theirs, the private side. Um, it also forbids the village utility staff from repairing any portion of a lead service. So if we run across a curb stop that is inoperable, and we change that curb stop box, we're required to change, um, out the entire portion of the municipal service from lead, um, to copper. Um, and we did run across approximately 40 instances in either of those scenarios where that was necessary. So if, if that trend were to continue and there's really no reason why we wouldn't see that it would, we would probably be looking at replacing, uh, at least 40 municipal services through the course of the remainder of the meter replacement program. Um, and it, it seems, um, you know, like a reasonable approach to say, if we need to do that, that would be an excellent time to, you know, ask the affected homeowner, um, if they wish to replace their side, their, their private side portion of the lead service. Um, and, and notify them that we have grant funding, which would allow, um, the village to do that or allow them to do that, um, at, at no cost to them. Um, there's a couple of advantages to that. You know, as we continue to talk about the lead service line, um, replacements and the, the EPA's new lead and copper rule, it does not count half services as any type of replacement. Um, both portions of the service have to be non-led in order for it to, to count, so to speak, um, as a, as a non-led service. So the, the ability to knock off a municipal side and a private side at the same time, um, really administratively helps the village, it, it improves that count. Um, from a record-keeping standpoint, it makes things a lot cleaner. And it seems to be an approach that can be well, um, well rationalized, well documented. Like I said, 50 up against 3,005 is, is really just a, a, a very small drop in the bucket. And it's very difficult to, um, identify 50 services, um, that we would, that we would target, um, you know, just at large across the community. So staff really thought that this was, was a, a good approach, given the amount of time we have left in the year. Um, the, the partnering with the AMI work, um, that, that must continue through this year. And if we get to early fall and see that, you know, we didn't trend with the replacements the same we, we did last year, um, staff will identify a couple of alternatives for the board to consider um, for the use of, of any grant funding which might remain. Um, and then we would make sure we would get that funding targeted into service replacement prior to the, the spending deadline at the end of the year.
Thank you. Should I open it up for questions? Yes?
Please.
Okay. Any questions from the trustees? Yes?
Uh, thank you, Elaine. I, I do think that this sounds, I mean, this sounds like a fair approach, uh, with, you know, having 3,000, uh, potential homes, uh, to fix and, and grant funds for 50 homes. That's, that's a very complicated sort of situation to figure out. I guess my bigger question is, how are we gonna, you know, what's the approach to fixing these, the rest of the homes? You know, what, what are we thinking future-wise? Because, um, I, I, I think, didn't I hear there's a mandate for, for these to be fixed within, you know, the next like 10 years?
Um, there's not a specific mandate, um, that is quite that blanket clear. Um, the, the lead and copper rule has a number of different conditions, which might prompt the replacement of a lead service line. Um, I think health officials, um, drinking water officials across the country will agree. Really, the only way to eliminate any type of risk is to remove the lead service. And, and everybody agrees that's the ultimate end goal. But to your first question is, you know, how are we going to tackle that? That's a lovely segue, um, for the April 18th meeting, at which we're going to begin to lay out that roadmap.
Oh, fantastic. Good. Well, I look forward to that because I, you know, it's, it's a, it's a very big issue that we have here. And I look forward to, you know, it's not an easy fix, uh, and I look forward to, to helping work on that for sure. So thank you for your work on this, though.
Yeah, so since we do have that future, that agenda item coming up, um, if anybody has questions related to future program years for this, um, maybe hold those until the 18th and stay focused on the item, what we're being asked tonight, which is to, um, approve a program for this year. Trustee Stokbrand.
Uh, I just wanted to, so the village properties. Is this only for, can we only use this money for residential? Because I'm assuming there are village properties, village hall, the police department? Or all?
Yes, it, it is a, um, residential program, specifically targeted at residential properties.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Waldorf?
Um, I just wanted to say I really appreciate, um, the focus of putting those in-home daycares first. I think that's great that we're going to prioritize, um, safe water for, for kiddos. Um, and just curious if, if there are any other, you know, types of facilities that you all looked at, you know, and I don't know if this applies, any kind of, you know, home health or, you know, residential care facilities, or, you know, are there any other vulnerable populations that we would want to, to try to prioritize? Or is that getting too far in the weeds for kind of the limited timeframe you've got?
Um, you know, I will tell you honestly, we, we did not, the, the program itself has been, um, very focused on, um, schools and daycares. Um, and as we mentioned, we've documented that the schools have all addressed this issue. Um, at least the schools in Shorewood have all addressed this issue on their own. I believe there is something approaching 10 certified daycare facilities within the village. Um, the vast majority of those are actually offered out of schools. Um, all the milestone programs are on that state certified list. The, um, the, the daycare, I forget the name, on Oakland Avenue, um, in the old Goldies facility. Of course, the state certified daycare, um, that does not have a lead service line. Um, so of the only certified daycares in the village, you know, the, the two, there are two that don't, they're in, in home facilities. We, I'm not aware of any, um, like CBRF type facilities in the village. Um, that certainly doesn't mean that there aren't any. That just means that that's not typically, um, you know, something I deal with on a regular basis. But I think certainly, um, if the board desires for us to look into those, um, types of occurrences, we could definitely do that. But to this point, I'm not.
I have a related question then. In the full, in the interest of full disclosure, I'm a member of Kingo Lutheran Church. Kingo has, um, the Shorewood Whitefish Bay preschool is there, but it's not a residence. So.
We, we did document the service line material. It is not lead.
Oh.
I actually sent one of our guys last week into that facility just to triple check, um, and it is not lead.
Thank you.
Are you able to identify the 3,000 homes that have the lead laterals? Obviously you have that number out there, so you, you know the addresses, you know all the homes that have current, uh?
Um, so up to this point, what we have done is, um, basically assumed that everything is lead, given the age of the, the housing stock in Shorewood. And then as we, as we have recorded and documented changes to an alternate material, copper or PVC, then we kind of remove them from the list. Um, one of the requirements of the lead and copper rule is to create a, an inventory, um, a documented inventory of, um, service line materials, both public and private, um, and make that inventory available to the public. Um, last year, actually two years ago now, um, we, we, while that, this wasn't a requirement at the time, um, staff thought that that would be valuable information for the community. And so we included, um, that survey, we'll call it, um, in our meter replacement program. And so our installation contractor, in addition to replacing the water meter um, and doing a cross-connection inspection required by the DNR once every 10 years in every residential facility, um, is also documenting service line material, both coming into the house and the internal plumbing mi- material. So upon completion of our water meter replacement program, we will have all of that information. Um, I have already been working with our GIS consultant, um, this year um, to develop kind of the platform and, and how we're going to transmit that data into GIS. Um, and how it will be visually represented so that the public can very easily, we use our GIS system to determine, um, material, line, service line materials at various properties. So, um, you know, we, the stars aligned for us, I guess I'll say. Um, in that we could not have picked a better time. We, the stars aligned for us, I guess I'll say, um in that we could not have picked a better time to do a. Um, a water meter replacement program, because if we were not, we'd be going into every single house in the village to document that service line material, so. You know, for once, things kind of worked out for us.
Uh huh, thank you. I appreciate that. Thanks.
I might bring, um, coming back to the suggested motion in front of us tonight, are there any other questions that you need answered in advance of a motion?
Sorry, just one more question about the contractors. Um, you have a list of pre-approved contractors. Is there, so the the community could use a variety of different contractors or other different contractors could be doing the work, is that correct?
No, they have, they have to be pre-qualified or pre-approved by by water utility staff.
Gotcha.
Um, and really what that will involve is us reviewing. Um, both their. The strength, I guess, of of their business, you know, to determine that they are a legitimate contractor that has been doing this type of work. For a period of time, um and and are familiar with it, has the wherewithal from a financial equipment standpoint to to do the work. According to the program requirements. Um, so we will develop that list. Um, and then in order to be eligible for funding, the homeowner will have to use a contractor from that list.
And I would assume all the contractors would be, it would be the same rate, the same, the same price from all contractors?
Um.
Or does that vary?
In some communities, it is. It is not. Um, you know, that's something we're still kind of working through. You'll notice in the packet that we. We are asking contractors to provide an estimate. Um, a per foot cost for that, and really the the sole purpose of that is to keep them honest, so to speak. Um, you know, I I, if if they give us, you know, a a an X dollar amount per foot. And then we have a homeowner select them off the list and they come back and that that amount that they're quoting is X plus Y. You know, um, certainly we are going to. That's going to raise some flags, we're going to have some conversations. Um, but as a pre-qualification, we can't necessarily, as I understand it, hold them to a specific cost. Um, but but we can deny their participation at that particular property, you know, and say. You know, that that doesn't line up with. What your initial cost estimate was and and direct the homeowner to go to another contractor on the list. You know, I I think. That we're going to learn a lot over this year, um in a lot of, in a lot of different ways. Um, you know, there there's quite a bit of money out there for this, um and. There's not necessarily an unlimited amount of contractors willing to do this work. I think more of them will probably get into this type of business, uh given the, you know, what everybody kind of sees on the horizon. Um, but for this year, it's it's going to be really interesting to see which which contractors are actually interested in doing this work. Um, and and what types of fees they're going to charge for it. We have a pretty good idea, you know, based on the work that we did last year and the year prior. Um, but things are changing so quickly and everything is is pretty volatile. You know, material costs. Are are changing from day to day, um particularly as you go into metals like copper, so. It it's really, I I really think it's going to have to be something staff is going to have to pay pretty close attention to, and we're really almost going to have to do this on a property-by-property basis.
Well, thank you.
Just have two quick follow-ups. So when does AMI start again and when is the soonest a homeowner could have this option available?
Um, AMI officially kicks off tomorrow. Um, and we, um, I, my intent is for this to be available to homeowners. Beginning, um, we we should have a fully qualified embedded list of contractors. I believe the latest should be April twenty-fifth. Um, so if in the interim we do run across any issues with valves or operable curb boxes. And we will probably just um put those kind of in a hold queue. Um, and come back to them after we have. We have this program up and running. Um, and and work toward any service line replacements that might be necessary, um if we run across any in the next three weeks.
Thank you.
Trustee Ursink?
I'd be ready to make a motion.
Excellent.
So I move to approve the Village of Shorewood twenty-twenty-two WDNR Safe Drinking Water Load Program. Private Lead Service Line Replacement Program, as outlined, and direct staff to begin process for. Pre-qualification of lead service line replacement contractors.
Second.
Trustee, um, excuse me, motion by trustee Ursink, seconded by trustee Stokebrand. Any further discussion?
I would just flag that it seems like there is maybe um a typo in the motion, that I think it's maybe supposed to be the Safe Drinking Water Loan Program, not Load Program.
Friendly amendment?
Yep.
Yeah.
Trustee Stokebrand, would you?
Agree.
Okay.
Knew that didn't sound right, but.
Um, everyone's paying attention. It's a good group. All right, seeing no further discussion, um, is this a roll call vote? No, it's a. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. Thank you very much, Director Bushlick.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to nine C. Consider Policy Thirty-two Conducting Hybrid and Video Recording of Public Meetings Amendment. So as you will recall, this was in our packet. Um, at the last meeting, and um although the agenda did not reflect that, so. We deferred it to this meeting. These are just amendments that have already been spoken to, but manager Ewald, do and just remind the. The group.
Happy to. Um, following April fourth, which is this evening, the expectation of committee members is to be in person. Um, however, if you'll recall, the village has always permitted, under unique circumstances, the availability for a member to phone into a meeting. Um, which would have, which happened at some level of frequency um prior to COVID. Um, and that phoning in would be approved by the chair. So to accommodate the possibility for both the members and presenters. Um, the hybrid meeting policy was further updated to reflect that volunteer committees may have virtual attendance by a committee member or presenter. If approved by the chair and staff liaison assistants is available for that meeting. Um, this would be a virtual presence only and would not be considered a hybrid meeting. Um, it then goes on to further clarify that if a group other than a board committee or commission desires to hold a hybrid or exclusively virtual special workshop. Um, such as the one we had last week for purposes of updating the commercial zoning code. Or a listing session that doesn't constitute a quorum of any type of group. Um, that the permission may be granted by the village manager or designated staff liaison.
Thank you. Um, so as you'll recall, we we approved this policy. Um, during a previous meeting, so we are just um being asked to amend the policy with these. Uh, red um passages. If by any chance there's something in the policy that a board member wanted to amend. Um, I would ask that we defer it to a future board meeting, um since we're not prepared to consider that this evening. So are there any questions regarding the amendment before us this evening? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move to approve the amendments to Policy Thirty-two Conducting Hybrid and Video Recording Public Meetings.
Second.
Our motion by trustee Baldoff, uh seconded by trustee Ursink, any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion carries four zero. Thank you. That concludes our new business for this evening. Uh, moving on to item ten, reports of village officials. Uh, ten A, village president. I put, so let's see, we've been talking um. Transparency and accountability are words that come up um on occasion. And it occurred to me after a conversation with trustee Stokebrand that I have never been very clear about sort of my. Approach to these things and um and so how I chair and facilitate meetings. Um, does reflect a philo- a certain philosophy and assumption around transparency and accountability that that are in place. Or measures that are in place, but since I've never clearly stated that, it could feel um that I'm just sort of ruling from the chair, you know? So I wanted to take this opportunity to um share how I think of these things and where we are as an organization. Um, and what are the guiding, you know, sort of principles, mechanisms, uh policies that guide. Um, the practices around transparency and accountability um for us right now. And uh from a leadership perspective, and so that kind of, you know, is code, policy, statute, what have you. Um, but then there is a personal level of that too, that I firmly believe in, and so. Um, you know, I just wanted to throw out, these are some guidelines around personal transparency, around how we communicate with one another so that we know what. Um, intentions are, what needs are, and how we're presenting those things. Um, in a way that promotes the most efficient and positive work environment for all. Um, including staff, um, the trustees and members of the public who would like to participate. So that's kind of like personal transparency, and then I think about personal accountability as terms of. You know, am I being clear with what I'm needing? Um, am I presenting it in a way that someone can respond in a way that, you know, affirms their dignity and professionalism? And and how do we all do that together? So that was my intent of sharing this kind of in writing. Um, I am happy to, um, and it is particularly from a chair. Um, and that I chair from a place of, you know, following the standards that are in place, which are reflected in code policy. And um, and budget, you know, capacity and staff. And if we want to make changes in those things, that that would be separate business um as a future item um for consideration. Um, but I'm happy to note those things and and capture those as we have a running. Um, there's always room for improvement, or I guess change more, because I think we do a really good job. And I know that everybody's committed to um achieving the standards of transparency and accountability that have been agreed upon and acted upon in the past. Doesn't mean that we can't add new ones, um but we need to be mindful that of that happening. It in a way that is anticipated, that everybody can um participate in. Um, in terms of policy decisions and and capacity. So that was my intention there. I welcome any conversation, any questions. Um, this is ongoing work of getting to know each other and wanted to put it out there, and I will go over these with the um new trustees. Um, we also don't have an official kind of onboarding process for trustees. Um, although manager Ewald has done a really great job, you know, meeting with with um trustees. Um, but as a board and sort of um presidents haven't had a very, you know, clear process as well, so this is all really good. I just really appreciate all the conversations that I've been able to have with trustees because it helps me be a better communicator. So, that's that. Um, in terms of other reports that I forgot to put on um the agenda. Uh, Congresswoman Gwen Moore um meets with uh chief electeds um during every term, and so my. Um, opportunity to meet with her is on April nineteenth. I would welcome any. Um, suggestions of topics that you would like me to bring to her attention, um and if you could email me, that would be great. Um, let's see, um, Beth Jacobasi, I attended the short moving forward meeting last night, um, community meeting. Um, Beth Jacobasi, who you all may know as um a really passionate advocate for. Uh, people with disabilities, adults living independently or children, adult children with disabilities who have grown up in Shorewood. Um, very passionate about um improving or increasing living opportunities. Um, for that, those members of our community and also places to gather and. Um, uh, it, you know, socialize as well as um. She's very passionate about creating a youth center, um in, and so is very hopeful that. The Shorewood Hub, which um Mr. Adams was here talking about a few weeks ago. That development, hoping that that will be a part of that development. Um, so she has done a lot of legwork on getting support for this, thinking around how this could be part of this development. Um, I reached out to her saying, you know, can we meet and? Um, just because I know that sometimes residents can work very, very hard on something and government doesn't work as quickly. And developers don't work as quickly, or there could be mishaps similar to the Fab. Um, plan of the foot washing station, and then we kind of get to the end, and I've seen it happen a lot of times where. You know, that things just aren't in sync, or it's it's just not clear. So I wanted to make sure that I connected with her just to think about, you know, what are her expectations and what are the communication measures? That are set up and making sure that I be a good facilitator and ally with that. Um, as we move forward or don't, or as the developer move forward, because he doesn't, he hasn't submitted anything at this time. So not a very clear, but I just wanted to let you know about that conversation that I heard last night and how I was following up on it. It trying to be of service to interested residents. Um, and I think that covers everything. Oh, quick update on a potential um bench fundraising. Um, we did get a quote on the bench and. Um, with the canoe launch at at four hundred and fifty dollars. Um, I'm going to meet with a resident who may be um willing to do the fundraising so that I'm not involved with that. Um, and also connected with the Shorewood Foundation, and they would be able to take funds directly to them in a earmarked for this project. And then we would be able to take advantage of the installation, so there was no additional cost for installation. So trying to get people set up to do that, and then I'll hand it over. I think that is really all my reports. Um, reports of other village officials, village trustees, ten B. Trustee Stokebrand.
Thank you. Um, I did want to thank you for bringing up transparency and accountability, and I wanted to make a statement. There is an inherent and permanent tension between the public's right to know and staff motivation or capacity to make information available. This can also be true for elected officials. If I get a call about a project or an issue, I have to make a determination about what I know about a situation. And if necessary, how to steer the resident to a source for information I may not have. It takes time and effort. The most important thing to remember is that we are all involved in municipal government, so the need for transparency and access. Is paramount, really, only behind public safety and critical public works like sewer and water. Think of it as public engagement, which fosters trust. The first level of access and awareness is the trustees. We are elected to represent the residents. If we don't know about something. How can we fulfill this role? So for example, there is an effort to bring fewer items before the village board to be respectful of trustees' time. I appreciate the sentiment, and I will also try to keep an open mind, but in general, this would be a disservice to the residents. I knew when I ran for office, the reading and preparation would be required, as well as meetings, mostly at night. Staff who have chosen to work in government know this too. Meeting lengths have been reasonable. Thank you, President McCaig. We need to continue our work, uh even if it's slow and time-consuming, because government. Effective governance requires collaboration, cooperation, discussion, deliberations, communication and oversight. This all takes time, but we signed up for it. Going through the process of government, governance can actually decrease conflict. If there isn't time for everything, then we need to prioritize. However, reducing public access would be a disservice to the community. Um, on another note, I would like to thank you in advance, uh provide a thank you in advance to all the poll workers. And staff for their work on election day tomorrow. Elections matter and every vote counts. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other village reports from trustees?
No, I just want to say, I hear here to uh supporting our poll workers and staff for their important jobs. I was going to say the same thing, and I'm glad trustee Stokebrand, that I, and I'm sure I could speak for the both of you, that you think it's important to.
Mm-hmm.
Happy to go vote tomorrow.
Yeah. All right, village manager.
No report.
Thank you. Item 11, future items of consideration. Are there any? All right, seeing none. We have a potential closed session related to discussing the annual performance evaluation of the village manager, which we all received her self-assessment this week. If anyone would like to make a motion to go into closed session, I would entertain that motion. But seeing as there are only four of us here this evening, it would be also okay to defer because there's nothing. The purpose of the cold, closed session would just to give us the opportunity to share feedback that I would then share with manager Ewald. However, she has also, part of the process that we set up was to meet one-on-one with trustees and provide that opportunity. So there is no action that has to be taken this evening. So with that, I will leave it open for a potential motion to go into closed session. And unless that is not the will of the board.
I, I think it would be good to have more trustees present for this. But I, you know, I wouldn't vote against, you know, a motion if it's the preference of other trustees to move forward tonight.
Oh, so I guess there are two options to make a motion to go into closed session or we could make a motion to defer. Okay, that's probably a cleaner way to go.
I would make a motion to defer a closed session.
I'll second.
All right, motion to defer item 12 by trustee Stokebrand, seconded by trustee Ursink. All those in favor? Say aye.
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 Any opposed? Item 12 is deferred. Motion carries four zero. That leaves the final lucky number 13 adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Ursink, motion to adjourn, seconded by trustee Baldoff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now adjourned at 8:42. All right, manager Ewald, get some sleep for election preparation. Thank you.